School board meeting for independent school district six two four to order. Before we go to the pledge of allegiance, I would just like to acknowledge that Deb Beloit is on the, is in remotely, excuse me, and that, so we're gonna do a roll call vote, but that there might be some difficulty around the technology and just would ask everybody to please limit the amount of talking over everybody because it becomes a little problematic. So with that, let's go into roll call of members.
Ellison, here. Mullen?
Here.
Newmaster?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Arcand?
Here.
Beloit?
Here.
Chapman?
Here.
All right, thank you. With that, please stand if you can and join us, remove your hats and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberating, and justice for all.
We will now do into the introduction of the student representative, Dr. Kazmicek.
All right, thank you Chair Mullen, members of the board. So at tonight's meeting, we are pleased to welcome our school board students. Twelfth grader Jennifer Adams will be our representative after serving as the alternate last year, and eleventh grader Bemnet Tesama will serve as the alternate representative. And Bemnet, welcome, she's sitting here. Jennifer is out of town and was unable to make it tonight. Both students are active in student organizations. Jennifer is involved in advancement via individual determination, or better known as AVID, and is the co-chair for the MH Youth Council. Bemnet is involved with Link Crew at South Campus and is actively involved in the elementary age children's ministry at her church. As I stated, Jennifer was not able to join us this evening, but we anticipate welcoming her in person at the October meeting. And so again, this evening, we are glad to have Bemnet joining us for the meeting. So welcome, Bemnet.
Welcome. With that, we will move into approval of our agenda. You have before us an agenda for this evening. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Chapman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ellison. With that, this will require a roll call vote.
Ellison, aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes, thank you. We also have before us a consent agenda. The consent agenda is our sundry items that we deal with on a monthly basis, and one of the things that we are so thankful for is the generosity of the community, and this month is no different. So with that, I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda. A motion by Ms. Thompson, I know her mic wasn't on, but a motion by Ms. Thompson, is there a second?
Second.
A second by Dr. Arcand. This also will require a roll call vote.
Ellison, aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
And we have a consent agenda, thank you all very much. It is now time for public forum. We would ask members if they would like to address the school board. Do please come up to the mic, introduce yourself, state your name. We would ask that all statements be three minutes in length and no more than three speakers on one topic. We would also ask that we not disclose any private information, that information is not to be made public. If that happens, I will ask that you not refuse or refrain from doing so. With that, I do have one speaker that would like to speak at the public forum, and I apologize upfront, I am very bad with names, so Nicole, if I chop your name, please correct it for the record. Is it Fritterer?
Yeah.
Okay, so Nicole Fritterer, and please correct your name for the record. Please come up and you can address the board.
Yes.
The microphone right here in front, thank you.
Fortunately, I don't have great experience with these, hopefully works. So my name's Nicole, and I'm the parent of three children in elementary school system. I'm here to advocate for a plan to move forward to five days in-person learning for our elementary students. I fear if this plan is not developed immediately, that will waste this entire school year robbing our children of a proper and essential education, a goal I know we all share. The hybrid model is meant to increase safety, but let's think about this as actually safer. The premise is that it's not safe for kids to be in school full-time, but it is safe for them to go three other places on their off days while their parents parse together care. During those three days, coming into contact with many more people than they would if they just instead went to school and were around the same kids and teacher day after day. The board has also said that it's safer for parents to pay White Bear Lake for extended day on the distance learning days. So kids in the classroom learning is not safe, but same kids, same school with no learning, paying White Bear Lake for extended day is safe. I'd like to know where the logic is in this. Private school in the same counties that White Bear Lake serve are offering five days a week in-person. Why is that? We share the same communities, have the same positive cases per 10,000. I and other parents are greatly concerned that the teachers' union is pulling so hard on the board's strings that you are prioritizing union interest over students' learning. People say they'll catch up when normal life resumes again. How is this actually possible? Will my fifth grader be able to learn both fourth and fifth grade curriculum simultaneously this year? Clearly, teachers will have to go backwards to where kids left off. What part of their education should they skip over to catch up? I am very concerned at the loss of learning and backward slide that has happened with my three kids these past six months, and I feel confident in knowing I am not alone in this problem. My kindergartners cannot learn to read online, learning three days a week, and two abbreviated days in-person is just not possible. I understand that all families want to go to school in-person, and for those families, the district has given them the option of full distance learning, and that's great, their needs are met. The same choice was not given to your other families for five days in-person. Your families that want five days in-person make up over 75% of your families, and we want to have that choice. Ramsey County has met the guidelines issued by our governor for the past two weeks, and even then, those guidelines are not mandates. My husband and I voted in favor of the board referendum this past winter. Currently, our family is receiving roughly 25% of the value over previous years, while our property taxes have already gone up. We, of course, want school to be safe for all, and you have put in place some great administrative controls to keep schools safe. It will not be perfect, and we know perfection doesn't exist, it never did. 75% or more of your families need and want the kids back in school five days in-person. What we need from the board is a plan and communication on what you are doing and what you need to have in order to get there. What is your roadmap? Without a roadmap, we are left twisting in the wind. Two days a week for an entire school year cannot be the plan. Failure to make a decision is not a decision at all.
Thank you very much for your comments. I will ask Dr. Kazmicek to follow up with you and answer those questions that you laid out for the board members. Thank you very much. I do not have any other papers for public comment. Is there anybody else that would like to address the board? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to our first informational item, C1, which is the update from the White Bear Lake Area Education Foundation.
All right, thank you Chair Mullen, members of the board. I'd like to welcome Andrea Lapnow, President of the White Bear Lake Area Educational Foundation, and Lori Arnold, Executive Director of the foundation, and they'll provide an update on some of the important work that they've been doing, and also probably tell us about an event that's coming up in a couple of weeks.
That's correct. Does anybody else have a problem with the glasses fogging up with their masks?
Oh, yeah.
So bear with me here. So good evening Chair Mullen and members of the school board. I'm Andrea Lapnow, as you said, I am the President of the Area Educational Foundation this year. I just want to give you a quick update on kind of what the foundation has been doing over the last six months to a year. We've been pretty busy amidst all the changes that have been going on in our world. Unfortunately, we had to cancel our golf event in June. That was scheduled for June, but due to just COVID and kind of rescheduling it, we thought that it'd be best to table it for this year. So next year, we already have it on the schedule for a new venue at Oak Glen, and that'll be on Monday, June 21st. So put that on your calendar, and hopefully we'll have an opportunity to have some fun out on the golf course next year. Just a quick update, we've had a couple of staff changes. As most of you know, our previous Executive Director, Dawn Hank, resigned last November. We were sorry to see her go, she took a new role outside the organization. But we are very pleased to introduce you tonight in a moment to Lori Arnold, our new Executive Director, who joined the foundation in February and has been doing a wonderful job. We also have a new office administrator, her name is Emily St. Martin, who came on board with us just about a month or so ago. So among all the changes that have been going, we'll be very busy, we have a lot of things going on. I just want to give you a quick update on a couple really kind of unique grants that we have granted in the last couple of months, and these are just bear grants and ones in E3. We provided funds to the Transition Education Center recently, and this was just about at the close of the last school year, for them to be able to purchase four bicycles, a bags game, as we call it cornhole, and an outdoor life-size connect for a game to help students get outside, get some fresh air and exercise, helping them make connections to improve their mental health and wellbeing. So that's just one of the ones we funded. We just recently helped fund the weather station project, which is an E3 grant at Otterlake Elementary School, which will be kind of neat because there'll be a lot of outdoor activities, hopefully more this year with everything going on in the district, getting kids outside to learn and engage in that outdoor area. We've also funded a couple of the things at Otterlake Elementary too, recently last year, but that's the most kind of recent one. And then another fund that we did, and this is kind of new and you're familiar with it, but the coffee, we call it actually the School Grounds Coffee Shop, which we helped fund through a certain grant that they applied for last year, we helped them purchase an espresso machine to help the kids get started on that coffee project that they want to implement. So when the new school is built at obviously North Campus or the new high school, that will be finished and that School Grounds Cafe will be there, but we kind of funded that to get started. So those are just a couple highlights on what we've been working on. I'm going to turn this over to Lori, and she's going to give you a quick update on a couple other things.
Thank you, and it's my pleasure to be here. Like you said, I'm Lori Arnold, and I'm the new Executive Director at the foundation. I'd like to fill you in a little bit on our Angel Fund that I know many of you are very aware of, that fund, but for especially new members of the board, I thought this would be a way to give you a little bit of background. So the Angel Fund was started about 20 years ago, and it's in place to help students and families that are especially in need financially. So in 2019, 2020 school year, I went back in and looked through our records to see what did we really fund with the Angel Fund dollars, and this is a partial list. We did a hotel stay for several days for a homeless family. We paid rent for family to help them get caught up so they wouldn't be evicted. We helped cover daycare costs. We gave gift cards for food, thousands of dollars worth of gift cards for food to Cub, to Walmart, to Target. We paid down lunch accounts at at least one or two of the schools in the district, and we assisted with expenses for family who have lost their homes to disasters such as fires. And last spring, we opened up an account, we started an account for COVID-19, fully knowing that there'd be families in need that would be coming to the foundation for extra support. And when the district was in that transitional period of setting up the breakfast and the lunch program when parents were coming in to get the food, there was that weekend there where families didn't have that lunch and breakfast program, that there were some restaurants in the area that were stepping up, and they were providing food for the families. So the foundation supplemented that financially to the restaurants and helped support the area restaurants who are supplying the food for the students. We had assistance with food and basic home expenses so families could cover healthcare needs that they had experienced with the COVID pandemic. Excuse me. And then just recently, we purchased Uber gift certificates for family needing to get their young children through programs at the early childhood education center, so that's just something new. And we're right now in the process of setting up what we're calling an Angel Fund Task Committee that we're going to meet, and we're going to develop a plan for how to put additional funds into the hands of our students and our families in need. So if any of you would have any suggestions to us at all of where you see needs within the district, of where families have needs that we maybe don't know about yet, if you could send them my way or send them to Andrea, that would be really helpful to us as we're trying to plan for this fall and for this school year, how to spend additional Angel Fund dollars. And then tied to the Angel Fund is our closet, and I don't know if many of you also are very familiar with the closet. In the 2019, 2020 school year, we assisted about 150 students and about 75 families in the closet by helping them with basic clothing, accessories, some basic toiletries, whatever we have in the closet, and they come in for personalized experiences of choosing what they need. And right now, we are getting many calls, and we are bringing families in, there's safety protocols in place with masks and hand sanitizers and limiting how many can be in the closet at a time. So we've got the, excuse me, the volunteers trained, and we're ready to go for this school year. We are collecting still clothes and outerwear for the 2020, 21 school year, and using additional Angel Fund dollars to purchase things that we don't have in stock so that the families can get what they need. So really quick, there's two grant deadlines coming up. The Ryan Family Art Grant is due October 6th, if you know teachers that might be interested. It supplements art instruction on the elementary level. And then we have our Brochus Grant due October 20th, enhances rigor of the curriculum and instruction in the classroom for a teacher or a group of teachers. And the instructions for these two grants are on our website along with the applications, but we're really hoping that we can, you know, have some robust applications come forward to the foundation. So I'm going to hand it back to Andrea for just a minute, she wants to talk to you for just a few moments about our upcoming fundraising event that's a few weeks away.
As Dr. Kazmicek mentioned earlier, yes, we do have a fall fundraiser coming, and for anybody that's maybe new here, typically we do a fall fundraiser in October, it's a pretty big gala, we've held it previously at the Badness Heights Commons. This year, however, will be an online event, and that's scheduled for October 1st at 6:30 PM, so that's a Thursday. There is a direct registration link on our website, so you can just go right to the main page and register, it's free to attend. It's going to be about a 20 to maybe a 25-minute presentation overall, it's a video compilation, which many of us have seen in the last few months, a lot of these out there. But it will feature our very own Dr. Kazmicek, just kind of a quick update on where the district is at. We'll feature our own Jenny Moore with the Career Pathways Program. It will also feature Dan Schmidt, who's our Lincoln Elementary Principal, he's also a foundation board member. So we're excited about it, and we're hoping that it will continue to help us raise money as we launch kind of a virtual event. So that's that on that. It is free to attend or to register, but I should mention there is a VIP optional ticket as well, just $50. If people want to choose to do that, they can throw themselves into a hopper for a couple grand prizes, kind of door prizes that we're doing. So we're excited about that, and we hope that maybe you guys can register and attend as well to view it. Lori, there's one last thing she wants to do.
One last thing is we're starting a new event this year, we're really excited about it. We're calling it Orange Tuesday. It's going to be the day after Cyber Monday, so it's December 1st, we're going to be holding an online auction, and our tagline for the event is going to be "Believe in Orange and Black." So watch your emails for more information on this fundraising virtual event that we're going to be planning. So I hope to see many of you on October 1st at the fall event and maybe connect with you at the auction.
And last, we created these wonderful masks that say "Go Bears" on them. Many of you have seen them, some of you might have one or two. We like to leave them behind, and if you'd like to share them with your friends, your family members, your students, whoever you have, I will note there's a couple toggles that come with them. Sometimes masks are easy or hard to kind of snug fit on your face, so they come with a toggle, if you choose to use that, you can tighten it up. We will leave these behind with you, I don't know where you'd like me to put them, but I can maybe put them up here. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much for the update. If you guys can hold on a second, I'm sure that there are some board members that would have some questions or some comments. With that, I will open it up for questions or comments regarding the foundation or the presentation that we just received. Ms. Thompson?
First, I just want to thank you for all the wonderful things that you guys do. Could you just maybe specify so it was on the record for people who don't know about the closet, how they can donate items?
You can drop them off right at the district's center office, and they will call our office and let us know that there's donations there that can be picked up. And really, it is gently used and new items. There are, we are long on a few things, so if you're in question over whether it's something we can use, you can send an email to myself, or if you go on the website, you can see our info at email address, send me an email and I will send it off to the coordinators to the closet and have them get directly back in touch with one of the donors. So it's really easy, and then we'll go down and we'll pick up the items, or if there are people down at the closet, down at the area learning center, if there are some of our volunteers down there, they could be dropped off directly down there as well.
Thank you.
Sorry, my mic was off. Dr. Kazmicek?
All right, thank you for being here, and I want to reiterate that we will make sure we spread the word with our leaders in the district. I know that the Angel Fund, we're entering the time of year when that can really come in handy, and so we want to work with you and make sure we can get the word out as much as we can, and we're committed to making sure that our other administrators are aware of that so they can help to facilitate that at their buildings. And thank you very much. Looking forward to the October event, and then hopefully a year from now, we'll be back at Badness Commons, so.
We hope so. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. With that, we will move into our next informational item, C2, which is the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Kazmicek?
All right, thank you Chair Mullen, members of the board. I'm going to have to rethink which glasses I wear. I think I'm going to go contacts with cheaters, I think is what I'm going to do in the future. All right, while we know that first days will look different this year with some of our students at home in distance learning and others attending in-person on alternating days, we are excited to welcome students back with the official first days on the calendar today and tomorrow. So many of us were out and about in the buildings, and it was just wonderful to see students laughing and learning and seeing our staff back in, working with students. It was a wonderful day. As we begin school this week, family, staff, and community members are invited to share back-to-school pictures along with why they are excited for the school year on Facebook. Those who include the hashtag #BackToSchoolBears will have a chance at being featured in a September 27th Community e-newsletter, Back-to-School Bears Photo Collage. I want to take a moment to thank those who have been working tirelessly this summer to serve our families and prepare for the school year, whether it was our extended day program providing childcare, our Nutrition Services Department providing free meals, the building's operations crew making the outside of our buildings welcoming, or our custodial staff members deep cleaning the inside of our buildings. Your efforts have been appreciated. Additionally, our school teams have been pulling together to ensure we're offering a top-notch academic experience as we start this school year. While all of our summers are more active than most realized, this year in particular has been even more filled with many moving parts and changing scenarios. Thank you all for the enormous amount of effort you have poured into this summer. After last week's school board special work session, we launched a fall 2020 website that will serve as the district's landing page for all things fall 2020, I'm sorry, last couple, about a month ago this happened. So including the Fall 2020 Return to School Guide, the Frequently Asked Questions document, which is newly updated on an ongoing basis, an archive of messages sent to families and other resources, and the site will continue to be updated as we enter the fall. And we are hiring, White Bear Lake Area Schools is currently hiring a variety of positions for the 2020, 21 school year. Find employment opportunities on the district's website and join White Bear Nation.
Thank you, Dr. Kazmicek. Is there any questions for Dr. Kazmicek on his report? Okay, thank you very much. We will now move into our first discussion item, D1, which is the Opening Enrollment Report. Mr. Wald, is this you?
It is.
Welcome.
Good evening. Do I make that?
I do not believe it is.
Okay, it is now. All right, thank you Chair Mullen, members of the board. Each year, at the September school board meeting, we report the Opening Enrollment Report. Typically, that data is from the Friday of the first week of school, so we've had a few days to flesh out what our enrollment was that first week. Today, the data I'm showing you is really fresh, it is today's enrollment from this morning. And so it's quite, I feel quite certain that when I report to you in October, the numbers are going to look a little bit different, but this is what we have as of today. One thing these numbers will reflect tonight is the significant impact COVID-19 has had in the enrollment of public schools. School districts across the metro are reporting lower enrollment numbers due to COVID-19, and we're no exception to that, and you'll see those numbers. This first slide looks at our elementary enrollment. Enrollment, the middle column is from September, the first week of September 2019, the first column is enrollment from this morning, what we reported this morning. Going into the year, we projected about the same number of elementary students as we had last year, and we thought it would remain pretty even, even though we expected higher enrollment at kindergarten. We thought it would remain pretty even because we had a really large fifth grade class that was exiting. So we expected to see that jump from fifth grade to sixth grade, and we thought our elementary numbers would remain fairly stable. Here you can see elementary school by elementary school where we wound up, and you can see that enrollment is down at each elementary school. That's particularly the case at Otterlake and Badness where the big fifth grade exit was most significant. So you can see we're down just over 200 students in our elementary schools. In secondary, we saw a slightly down at Central, those numbers are a little lower than we expected. Sunrise had a jump in sixth grade primarily, but Sunrise's numbers were strong, and so our middle school was plus 33 students. At the high school, North Campus was up a little bit. The 10th grade class last year, our current junior class, was a small bubble of students that have moved through the grade levels. Each year, we reported this one bubble. Every time they moved to a different school would impact the enrollment positively, or well, typically negatively because it was a smaller class. That's the case this year as those students moved to South Campus. And so even though the ninth grade class coming into North Campus wasn't a significantly larger class than typical, it's larger than the 10th grade class that was exiting. So South Campus, down 55 students reflects that smaller 11th grade class moving in. ALC numbers are really hard to put much confidence in this early in the year, those numbers usually settle in in October. And then our Transition Education Center does have some higher numbers this year. That program is really up significantly because it's such a small school, their percentage is pretty high, plus 10. So at the ninth through 12th grade level, we're down 40 students. That puts our secondary schools at minus seven, starting out the year, for a total of 213 students less this year than last year. And that number is really based on the COVID-19 experience. As we talk to school districts across the metro, they're experiencing the same thing. We look at change by cohort, and typically, as we look at cohort changes, they're plus a single digit or minus a single digit, that's how the grade moved from first grade to second grade. Did you gain students or lose students when they went from first to second and second to third? And you can see at kindergarten, we're minus 37 from the previous year, but really minus about 57 of what we had anticipated for this year. And as our enrollment office talked to kindergarten parents, they heard for many of them, I think we're going to sit it out one more year. This doesn't feel like the right time to start kindergarten. And so especially for the younger kindergarteners, I think that was probably a pretty easy decision for parents to make. And so we were trending pretty normal through June through July, and at the first week of August, we looked to be about where we expected to be, and then it just really turned at that point. And parents had to start making decisions, and where they had kindergarteners, and really throughout our elementary grade levels, they made the decision to, for kindergarten, hold them back for one more year, or perhaps, or to private school, and we saw that throughout our elementary grade levels. And we saw that throughout our elementary grade levels. Many parents made that decision to homeschool, private school, or in kindergarten, hold them back for a year. That wasn't so much the case in the secondary level where the numbers trended pretty normally. 10th grade saw a drop, sixth grade and 10th grade, but then higher in senior year. Senior year, we always see that big jump. You see the plus 64 and wonder, why do we get so many seniors? And that reflects, to some degree, it's ALC students who stuck around for another year or it might be Transition Education students who weren't part of the cohort or were part of the 12th grade cohort last year and now as an 18 to 21-year-old student in our Transition Education Program, we include them in our 12th grade. Because they technically haven't graduated yet, they stay engaged in our program and Transition Education Center and then they can graduate before their 22nd birthday. The next two slides will look at hybrid versus distance learning. How did that play out at each elementary school and secondary school? And you can see our 78.9, almost 80% of our elementary parents chose hybrid for their students, just over 20% chose distance learning. Some of the highest percentage was Vadniss at 37.4%. We'll be interested in learning why that number was significantly higher at Vadniss. And then Hugo and Anika, between those two schools, was the low distance learning schools at 14.4%. So again, about 80% of our elementary students are attending hybrid, just over 20% are attending as distance learning students. At the secondary level, we saw a little bit higher at the secondary level for distance learning. So 76.4% chose hybrid, 23.6% of our secondary students are engaged in a distance learning program. So across the district, that is 77% in hybrid and 22.4% in distance learning. So that's it. That's what we have for our Opening Enrollment Report. Our official numbers and important numbers for October 1st, because that's how much of our funding formulas are based, is our October 1st enrollment. So we'll take a look at that in our October Board Meeting and see where we're at. Things sometimes change. Oftentimes, our secondary numbers are a little lower in October because we find that more often secondary parents don't unenroll their students, they just move on. And so perhaps they moved or they transferred, they didn't bother to let us know. And so throughout the month of September, we figure out who's not coming back. And so you would expect that our secondary numbers would be a little bit lower in October than they are today.
Thank you, Mr. Wald. Is there questions for Mr. Wald about the update on the opening numbers? Ms. Ellison?
Mr. Wald, I just have a question about once the data is available on October 1st, how that data is broken down? Is it broken down by students' ethnicity, by gender, by socioeconomic status? I mean, or is it straight numbers? Because I think it would be really interesting to look at that data and look at our families who decided one thing or another and kind of get a bigger picture of our students and the choices that were made this year.
Agreed. We didn't feel like we had good enough numbers yet.
Oh, definitely.
To report that, but we agree and we've had a lot of conversation at the cabinet level about the ethnicity and how is, what decisions are our students of color making as it relates to attending school during a pandemic? And that's a really interesting question, one we've been wondering too. And so we'll continue to be putting that data together over the next month.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions, comments? Dr. Newmaster?
And I would agree with Jessica's question, being an excellent one. And I know you reassured us that you'd be looking at ethnicity, but I do think especially to look at socioeconomic and our reduced in free lunch kids, who's, what impact and maybe the impact of tier one changes, different schedules might impact that, I don't know. But it is good to analyze it and see who's taking advantage of what as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Chapman?
Yeah, Mr. Wald, as far as the numbers being down primarily on the elementary side, you had mentioned that other districts are seeing the same thing. Are they seeing as big of differences, would you say, or about the same? I mean, do you have a feel as far as what is happening with other districts, particularly surrounding districts? And I believe you had mentioned also that these children are probably, there's probably indication that they may be going elsewhere, such as homeschooling or private schools or whatever. But if you could just talk on the, you know, what you know or if you have any more information as far as what other districts are seeing, if maybe you don't have that at this point, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't have any specifics on that. So really until today, we weren't sure where we were going to be. Are we going to be seeing 40, 50 students swing one way or another from last Thursday, Friday to today? And might tomorrow look different than what we're seeing today. So I think we really need a week before we kind of know where we're at. And that's the sense you get from other districts too, like this is trending poorly, but they feel the same as us, like we don't know how it's going to end up once the kids show up.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions, comments, concerns? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Wald. I appreciate the update.
Thank you.
We will now move into our second discussion item, D2, which is the First Reading of School Board Policies 412, 412 and Policy 705. Just for general knowledge, I will say that we typically have our board policies come before the board for two readings and we open it up for questions, comments, concerns on the first reading, allowing board members to ask questions regarding the policy and then bring it back for an additional reading and a pass or a vote at the next meeting. So with that, are there any questions regarding these three policies? Seeing none, we will then bring these back next month for an action item. With that, we will now, sorry, my glasses are a little fogged. We will now move into our first operational item, E1, Action on the City of White Bear Lake Bus Garage Convenience. Dr., Mr. Wald, is this you?
It is.
And I apologize, I can't totally see. I don't have glasses on, so you're going to have to.
All right. All right, well, I'll see how long I go before mine fog up.
All right.
So yes, Chair Mullen, members of the board, the current bus garage the school district occupies is made available to us through, leased through the city of White Bear Lake. The site of our current bus garage, which is south of the main parking lot at North Campus, was the original maintenance facility that accompanied the armory in White Bear Lake located on Fourth Street. In 1996, the armory was interested in selling the site and the school district was interested in purchasing, but at the time, they discovered the National Guard had no mechanism allowing them to convey property to school districts. They could convey properties to cities and counties, but not school districts. So while the site was not of interest to the city, the district and the city coordinated an agreement where the city purchased the site from the National Guard for $85,000 and leased it back to the school district for use as our transportation and grounds facility and we've been using it as such. During that time, we've made improvements to the property as necessary to keep it modern and functional and the lease that we paid to the city has made up the amount of money that the city paid for the property. With the approval of the 2019 Facilities Plan and the bond referendum, we asked the city to formally convey the property to the school district to support the site expansion and the unification of the high school at our North Campus location. We've purchased property on the north end of the school district for a new bus garage. We won't be using that as a bus garage in the future, but rather just as expansion of the site for the high school addition. The White Bear Planning Commission reviewed this proposal at their July 27th meeting and the city council approved it at their August 25th meeting and that resolution is included in the packet. So the recommendation tonight is that the school board approve the conveyance of the property at 4969 Division Avenue from the city of White Bear Lake to the school district for the purpose of accommodating the expansion and improvement of the current North Campus site.
Thank you, Mr. Wald. You've heard the recommended action. Is there a motion to do so? A motion by Dr. Newmaster. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Chapman. Any discussion regarding the recommended action? Hearing are seeing none. This will require a roll call vote. Let us the clerk please call the roll.
Ellison, aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcan?
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes. Thank you very much. We will now move into our next operational item, E2, which is the Action on the 2020-C Bond Refunding, excuse me. Mr. Wald, is this you?
It is. In 2004, general obligation school building bonds were issued to construct Onika Elementary School. The bonds were refunded in 2012 and they're now eligible to be refunded again in 2020. Based on our current interest rates and terms of the debt, it's beneficial to refund the bonds now, realizing a savings estimated to be about $180,000. Included in the board packet tonight is a resolution for the board to consider and the pre-sale report prepared by our municipal advisors at Ellers. Shelby McQuay is here tonight. Shelby's a parent of three White Bear Lake students. She's also the PTO of our Vadniss Heights, she's the PTO chair at Vadniss Heights Elementary and she's a municipal advisor at Ellers Incorporated. So welcome, Shelby. She'll walk the board through the resolution and the pre-sale plan.
Welcome, Shelby.
Thank you. Good evening. So the board packet includes the resolution, which is the action item tonight. And as Mr. Wald said, I'll just walk quickly through the pre-sale report. You probably are all pretty familiar with these documents at this point, so I'll just cover the highlights through this. So this will be an 8.915, or we're estimating an $8.915 million general obligation school building refunding bond. So these originally, as Mr. Wald mentioned, were the Onika bonds that built that building and that election was passed in 2003. So you had already refunded these bonds with the savings of approximately $1 million in 2012. So we're estimating savings of an additional $180,000 from the original, or from, on this refunding. So the existing, there's only one maturity left. Normally, there's several maturities that you're refunding, but the single maturity is $9 million, so it is still worthwhile to refund it at this point and you'll generate approximately $180,000, $180,000 of additional savings. So that one maturity has as an interest rate of 3.5 and we're estimating a true interest cost of .56 on this refunding. That $180,000 of savings is equivalent to almost 2% of the refunded debt service. These obviously will be issued without an option of prior redemption, so you will not refund these bonds again. The bank qualification is issued if you are issuing less than $10 million. Of course, you're over that for 2020. This is the 2020-C issuance, so you've issued more than $10 million, so this won't be bank qualified, but you will receive the state credit enhancement. So that's that additional sort of bond insurance on the bonds to ensure that you'll receive the best sort of market structure. So the current ratings on the bonds is that AAA rating, that's the credit enhanced rating that you get from the state. The underlying rating for the district is a AA minus and we'll get a new rating on those bonds through S&amp;P. So this process, you've gone through this process a few times already this year. We'll probably have a brief rating call or an email with S&amp;P just to cover some highlights. I noticed the updated investment policy that you had a first reading of tonight, so we'll share that with the rating agency as well. So I think I'll just skip quickly to the numbers here, which begins on page seven. So the maturity that you're refunding is $9 million and the paramount of the bonds is just under that. So we're anticipating that you're going to receive a premium on the bonds, meaning that the underwriters will pay additional for your bonds and you can use that then to lower your borrowing amount. So that's shown on page seven, about $176,000 of bond premium. And then the cost of issuance and the discount are included there for a total of 9.09. The prior originals debt service is on the next page, so page eight shows that $9 million maturity with the 3.5% coupon. The following page then just shows the debt service schedule, so one, interest payment and then on two, 1/22, you'll make your final payment on this issue. So I guess just keeping in mind overall that this is the last payment on this issue. However, most of your debt then wraps around other debt, so the intention here is to just generate some additional savings on this bond, but overall, keeping your total debt levy constant as you told the taxpayers during the school building bond. So savings on this issue, you'll pay off the $9 million, but overall level debt structure throughout the, throughout the total building bond issuance of the 2028 issuance. So the debt service comparison is just shown on page 10, worth $180,000 of savings as netting about 2% of the savings from the 2012-B bonds. So overall, that's just some highlights on this. I would note that as part of your parameters resolution tonight, we are including in the parameters that you'll save, you award the sale if you save at least $100,000 and one, which is 1.1% of the debt service. So even though estimates of the current market are that you'll save $180,000, we just want to ensure that you wouldn't award the sale if the savings are less than $100,000. And that's sort of equivalent to making sure that your cost of issuance doesn't exceed what you would actually save. So that savings is net of the cost of issuance, but sort of a, kind of a break even point that you wouldn't want to kind of go through this process if you weren't going to save quite that much. So on October, on October 8th, we'll issue the, we'll take bids on the bonds. The superintendent or assistant superintendent and a board officer will award the sale. This is very similar to how you've done your previous issues this year. And then at the board meeting on the 12th, you'll ratify the sale of those bonds. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Shelby. Before we get into questions, why don't we get a motion to further recommended action and then we can get into a question? So there's a recommended action to approve the resolution to refinance the Series 2012-B General Obligation School Building Refunding Bonds. Is there a motion to do so? Some moved. There's been a motion by Dr. Arcan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Newmaster. There are. Second by Dr. Newmaster. Are there any questions for Shelby, or for any questions regarding the resolution? Hearing are seeing none. This will require a roll call vote.
Ellison, aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Belloid?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Motion passes.
Okay. Have a good evening. Thanks.
Thank you. We will now move into our next operational item, E3, which is the action, action on the update official depositories for the school district funds and authorized bank accounts and signatures. Mr. Wald?
Thank you, Chair Mullen, members of the board. I'm going to, at this time, call Andy Johnson up, and I want to introduce Andy to the board tonight. You may recall that Tom Wazork retired this past summer, and so we, during the spring, did a search to find the right person to bring onto our finance team that had the right experiences and the right knowledge to guide, to help us with, with school finance and lead our finance department. Andy Johnson is that person, and she's been on board since August 30th, I think. So she's just finding her way around, and probably her first time in this room, maybe so. All of that during the tour. Andy's also the mother of a kindergartner here in White Bear Lake, so she's had a big day. I'll let Andy introduce herself and tell you a little bit about her experiences.
Thank you, Mr. Wald. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. So as Tim said, I'm Andy Johnson, excited to be here and join the White Bear family. Started my career after college as an auditor with Larson Allen, now Clifton Larson Allen, if you're familiar with them. After that, I went to Faribault Public Schools and served as the controller for several years, and then was promoted to the director of finance and operations. And most recently, I've been in Sauk Rapids Rice Public Schools as the director of business services. So personally, my husband and I are very excited to be in the area. As Tim said, we have a kindergartner, Jonah. He had a great first day. And then we have a four-year-old, Caleb, and a 10-month-old, Etta. So couple of future bears as well.
Welcome to the district, and you'll get used to go bears pretty soon.
Yeah, I've heard it many, many times. Yes.
Okay. We have a recommended action, unless there's something else that you'd like to discuss?
Nope. Just to share that typically at our January organizational meeting, you approve the signers on all official depositories, and now that Andy is on board, we need to update that list and add her to the, to the list, so.
You apparently didn't tell Andy that it's a requirement to say go bears after the introdu, after the introduction, but that's okay. We'll have to let slide this time.
Yeah, sure. She'll get it.
So the recommended action is to move to approve the revised list of official depositories for the school district funds and authorized bank accounts and signatures for 2020. Is there a motion to approve the recommended action?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Ellison. Is there a second?
I can't.
A second by Ms. Thompson. Is there any discussion regarding the recommended action? Hearing are seeing none. This will require a roll call vote.
Ellison, aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Belloid?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. We will now move to our fourth operational item, E4, which is the action on approving policy 808 face coverings. I noticed that this moves away a little bit from our typical policy process, but seeing the need to produce this policy in quick fashion, felt that it was important that we get it out. I will pass this off to Dr. Kazmercheck and let you introduce it, and then we can move through it.
All right. Thank you, Chair Mullen, members of the board. So as Chair Mullen mentioned, this is, again, not our typical policy approval process, but we're going to ask you to do that tonight, given the nature of the policy. It's an extensive policy. It's been vetted by our legal counsel, and our policy committee reviewed it last week. And so there's multiple people listed on, multiple people listed on the agenda item. So if there are questions, we have a host of folks who would be able to answer those otherwise. I will just, I guess we'll just turn it back to you, Mr. Mullen, to.
Thank you, Dr. Kazmercheck. Before us, I think that it's probably best for us to get a motion and a second on the table, and then we can discuss any concerns or questions regarding the policy. So before us, there's a recommended action to approve policy 808 face covering as recommended by the school board policy committee and cabinet. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Chapman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Newmaster. I know that the board policy has been in the packet. Are there any questions or any discussion around the policy? Hearing are seeing none. This will require a roll call vote.
Ellison, aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Belloid?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
And the motion passes, and the policy is adopted. Thank you all. We will now move to our fifth operational item, E5, which is the action on approving the revised 2020, 2021 school calendar. Dr. Gillespie?
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. At our last board work-study session, we, you approved to move this, start of the school year to today, and we talked about bringing a revised school year calendar to you, and so that's what we have for you tonight, looking at three days that we would like to move from professional development days as originally indicated on the calendar to instructional days for our students, which would be Wednesday, October 14th, Friday, February 12th, and Monday, April 5th. And part of the reason that we feel comfortable with this change is that part of the time designated on Fridays, as, as we've talked about, is time for staff to engage in professional development throughout the school year. And so that really is based in best practice, and so we don't feel like we're losing that time, and it will allow us to meet the mandate from Minnesota Department of Education for the, the number of hours that we are required to have as instructional hours for our students. So we have recommended action that you approve tonight, this amended calendar.
You've heard the recommended action. Is there a motion to adopt the action?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Ellison. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Thompson. Any discussion regarding the recommended action? Hearing are seeing none. This will require a roll call vote.
Ellison, aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Belloid?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Then the motion passes. Thank you all very much. We will now move into our last operational item, E6, which is the action on the approval of the property purchase agreement. Is this Mr. Wald, or Dr. Kazmercheck?
I can kick it off. So we have two properties before you tonight. You've received information about both. So this is, again, consistent with our desire to expand the site here as we, as we enter the design phase, and so these properties fit in with that, with that plan. There might, Mr. Chapman, would you like, are you, we had talked about potentially going into closed session to have a discussion. Is that, is that still, okay?
Yes, I'd like to go into closed session on this.
Yeah. So we, and then, do you have the notation in front of you down there?
Uh, no.
On the bottom, right?
Right there. You know what? Yeah, let me, hold on a second. I'm going to put my glasses back on. At this point of the meeting, if needed, close session pursuant to Minnesota statute 13D05 subsection 3C to consider an offer to purchase property identified as PID 143022120007 and PID number 143022120017, located in Ramsey County, state of Minnesota. So at this time, I think that it would be in our best interest to go into closed session. Would ask for a motion to do so.
Mr. Chair, so moved.
There's a motion by Mr. Chapman. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Ellison. We will call the roll, and what we'll do is, after we go through closed session to discuss the properties, we will come back out, we'll come back into here, and then finish up the business of the school board. So with that, I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ellison, aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Belloid?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
I will then call us into closed session. Okay, then I will ask for a motion to reopen the meeting. There's been a motion by Dr. Newmaster. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Thompson. Any discussion? Hearing are seeing none. This will require a roll call vote. Would ask the clerk to please read the roll.
Ellison, aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Belloid?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Thank you all very much. The motion passes, and we are back in session. At this, at this point, I would like to go to action item E6, excuse me, operational item E6, apologize. Action on the approval of the property purchase agreements. Dr. Kazmercheck?
Thank you, Chair Mullen, members of the board. So we have a, I'm going to read a recommended action here after our discussion in closed session. So move to approve the purchase agreement for the property described as PID number 143022120017, located in the city of White Bear Lake, county of Ramsey, state of Minnesota. The board authorizes the superintendent and the assistant superintendent for finance and operations to sign all documents as necessary to acquire said property.
You've heard the recommended action. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
There's been a motion by Ms. Thompson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Newmaster. Is there any discussion regarding the recommended action? Hearing are seeing none. This will require a roll call vote.
Ellison, aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Belloid?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Thank you very much. The motion passes. At this point, we are at the board forum portion of the meeting. Is there anything tonight for board forum? Ms. Ellison?
I just wanted to say thank you on the record for all the leadership and for all the teachers. All four of my kids had a great day today, and so I'm really grateful for all the work that's been done.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Dr. Newmaster?
I would second, I would second that, and I saw my. Neighbor's fifth grader skipping in the house, very happy from his first day up at Metasca. So I know, that's one interview that went, he was very happy. So, good job to everybody out there.
Thank you. Mr. Chapman?
And I also want to echo that. The, I asked my boys in high school when they came home how it went, and both of them had pretty positive things to say, which, from a teenager's standpoint, that's always good when they've got something to say about school. So I really appreciate all of the work that everybody has done, all of the staff. Echo Ms. Ellison's statements, and Dr. Newmaster's, all of the staff, teachers, everybody, from bus drivers to lunch folks, to you name it, and, and administration as well. Good job.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Is there any other questions, comments? Ms. Thompson?
Echo all of that, and I'm very, my middle schooler is very excited for her first day tomorrow, and I guess maybe the high schooler is also. So, but yeah, all the great work so far. I've had some people that say their kids had great first days, so, very exciting. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Chair Mullen, I motion for an adjournment.
I will second that, and would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ellison, aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Belloid?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much, and have a good evening.